Well, let me pray for us as we get started. Father in heaven, we thank you that the business of the church is just as important as the worship of the church and the mission of the church. So guide us in this, guide me in this. We thank you for your people who love you so much. So let us give a clear and obvious vision for our church and where we are. And we pray this Jesus, for your name's sake. Amen. I'm going to cover a few things and then let you answer, ask, and I'll try to answer any questions you have. And if I can't answer it live, I'll grab the answer for you. But if some, if all of you, maybe most of you saw our online town hall meeting, the thrust of what we announced in that town hall meeting was that we were concluding our Freedom Impact Fellowship campaign that was initiated about four years ago under Paul Uttenich, who was the executive pastor at that point. And it's a very successful campaign, as we showed you in the numbers. We raised about $1,118,000 and change to pay off our mortgage. And in that, I think I got the numbers wrong when I did it online, but we've given about 10% of that, we've given exactly 10% of that to missions, about $111,825 and change. And we were going to conclude that and celebrate it because the church was very, very successful in this campaign in doing what they started to do. And that was to pay down the mortgage. The mortgage has been around for a while and we wanted, we've been attempting to pay it off. And so we decided, y'all decided to do this. But as I said in the meeting, as I said in that meeting, we decided to conclude it for several reasons. First of all, it had been successful, but we had not done a good job of pushing it forward. It was something that I inherited. It was something that an entirely different staff had started. There's no one, this may be hard to believe, still on staff other than Winston, who was around. And Winston's been around forever, so nothing ever applies to Winston. It never applies to Winston. There was nothing, there was no one to do it. So we said, hey, it's been successful. Let's bring it to a conclusion. Let's celebrate it. And it's been, I mean, you did an amazing job. It helped us pay down around, including some penalties we had to pay for a little bit of prepayment last time we did a prepayment. We put more than $950,000 towards the mortgage and paid it down. And so we decided to go with, and I appreciate y'all laughing, our new campaign this year, which is Pay Off the Mortgage. That's the name of this campaign. And the reason we really initiated this was, came out of three things. Lots of discussion between the session and the staff about the campaign. And then various people in the congregations had really different opinions about that campaign. Some really loved it. Some were wishing that when they gave money towards the building, their 10% might not have gone to mission. I understand that. They wanted to give a very designated amount. And really, it had lost momentum. And so we decided to celebrate it and say it's done and it's great. But the bigger factor that jumped up at us this year, and I said this, is we have the ability to sell our cell phone tower, lease. So if you go to the bottom of this parking lot, and I don't mean where most of you come in, I mean, go to the second parking lot and go to the bottom, and then look across the street, there's a fake big palm tree right there. And the church owns the property all the way down Sunrise, past Lazarella to the next subdivision. I don't know how many acres that is, but we leased that to Verizon. Verizon approached us. They wanted to put up a 5G tower. So we entered into an agreement. Actually, this is crazy, but my first Sunday when I was candidating of all things, David Meal got up and gave a defense of this, and y'all all clapped. But I realize no one remembers that clapping. And so we entered into an agreement to put that cell phone tower up. What that means is we own the dirt. They have a right to that dirt for as long as they want it. It's a four-year auto renewing lease. And it was put in such a way that the plans that you had, which were to put a parking lot there, it didn't interfere with those plans. The parking lot would go in, that was unused dirt. I don't know that we would use it as a parking lot going into the future because there was an intention to build a worship center right out here, right? And that worship center would take up parking and would need to fill parking into that. I'd love to have that problem. We don't today. So we entered into that agreement. And having had that cell tower built, we were approached about selling the lease of the cell phone tower. And we were offered $268,269. So Ethan, if you could throw my numbers up on the overhead screen at this point that I sent you. What we realized is that at the end of this year, we would owe $700,000 on our mortgage. And what we had on hand was this $268,269. That sale has been executed. We also have a usable surplus in our existing accounts of $200,000. And we had a current Freedom Impact Fellowship campaign of unspent money. That money has been given to missions, but that leaves us $107,000, ranging the total on hand to $573,914. We pay about $13,000 and change every month on this mortgage. And so we feel like the need of the hour is to pay off that mortgage. Well, why? What do we need to do with that $13,000? Well, A, it's just wise to get debt free. That's just a wise thing to do. Secondly, all bets are off on the economy next year. Let's just be honest. Every store on every corner is closed. Every restaurant is struggling. People are losing jobs. It's going to hit the stock market sooner or later. And it will be nice to have that kind of cushion, that payment taken out of our budget so that we don't have to pay $13,000 a year on this, a month, $13,000 a month. Thank you. And so we're trying to raise $126,000, $126,086, $126,086 to pay off the mortgage. But I challenge you that we wanted to raise $250,000. And several of you asked me by email, Pastor, why do you want to raise $250,000? It only cost $126,000 to pay off the mortgage. Couple of reasons. Number one, this building is old. Last year, that air conditioner failed at $40,000, and this one's on her last leg at $40,000. Number two, we have a space problem, and we're going to need to possibly buy some portable units. As you see, we're offering more Sunday schools than ever. People are signing up for those Sunday schools, and we are out of space, and we may need to buy some portable units. Number three, and this is closest to my heart, really, the signage on our campus is embarrassing. It just is. It wasn't embarrassing when you built it. But most of you don't know that there is a pitiful sign right ahead here that is faded blue and only has one working light bulb and not three, that looks like it should be in front of a restaurant that's going out of business that says Catalina Fiddles Church, that the cactus have covered up. We need to put up a sign so that people know we're here. I've been asked several times, isn't this Push Ridge Christian Academy? Because they have a nice sign and we don't. And so our, I mean, God really met me in this. The sign, when you entered, blew over last week in the storm because it's rotten. And it needed to blow over because it had two of our, it was too symbols old anyway. We changed our symbol twice. So we need to do basic maintenance. We need to seek to possibly buy some portables. We need signage. And in addition, in the new reality, we're going to need to stream better and stream more often. So one of the things that's happened is as we've gone to more streaming, and we're streaming this and recording this, it's harder. So we need to get fiber optic brought to the building. Well, the fiber optic stops at the top of Campbell there at Sunrise. And we've entered into an agreement with the school. I know that we own the school, with the school, and we operate financially apart. They're run by a board that we elect, and so our monies don't intermingle, and that's a good thing. But they would like fiber optics too. So for $40,000, we can pay, which company is it, Peter, somebody, to run the fiber optics to our church, which will make our streaming as foolproof as it gets in this world. Not perfectly foolproof, but we could go back to doing, for instance, YouTube and Facebook Live. So that's why we're trying to raise that additional money over the $126,000 so that we can do basic maintenance, we can figure out how we solve a space problem, and we can get fiber optics. And so that's what we're putting in front of you. You see the Pay Off the Mortgage. I'm going to answer the questions that are asked me online, and then I'm going to let you ask some questions about this. I was asked this question. When we take the $200,000 surplus and spend it on this Pay Off the Mortgage, how much will be left in our, in our bank accounts? Well, we have currently in surplus, now this is designated monies. This is not all just surplus. We have about a million dollars. If the giving were to continue through the end of the year, we would create an additional surplus in this calendar year from your generous giving. So in light of that projection, even if we don't make that projection, what we have, if we spent $200,000, we would still have about $800,000 in surplus. Nonprofits should have on hand, three to four months of expenses. That's how you calculate what you want in the bank. And $800,000 is more than three to four months of rudimentary expenses for us. So that's how we're calculating that. I'm hoping you'll super abundantly give that, and we won't even use the surplus. But that's, that's how much would be left. I was also asked, if we divided it by giving units, how much would each giving unit? This is a great question. Well, so far, we've had 545 different units give to this church. Would to God that all 545 were giving every week or every month? But that's not the case. The average giving per unit is about $2,400. The average monthly giving is about $307 per unit. So I didn't do the math, but you would just take 545 and divide it into $126,000 or $250,000, and that's what each unit would have to give to give. And so it's, the number you were looking for was 545. I was also asked, is there a prepayment penalty for paying off the loan? Yes, that prepayment penalty, now when you boo, remember that I wasn't here when this was agreed to. And Peter Pomonis, who is our excellent Director of Operations, and has literally carried this church through the pandemic, trust me, we wouldn't be here without Peter. And I talk about this loan often in negative, dark terms. But our prepayment would be about 5.7%, which is about $30,000 on 700, something like that. I think that's about right. So why should we pay it off early and pray the prepayment penalty? Because that prepayment penalty still saves us a lot of money over the length of that loan as we pay it off. That would be still cheaper for us to pay that prepayment penalty. And I promise you, as long as I'm the pastor, if we ever have to have another loan, we're not going to have a prepayment penalty. This is the worst negotiated loan ever. I don't know who did it, so I can say that. But that's the answer to that question. Okay, those are the questions I got emailed. Would you like to ask any? I got some other things to report on, but about this, do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
Can you share with us the amount of interest we are paying if we just pay it out? And I'm confused, the loans you mentioned before, as opposed to that five long sentence for the payment rate?
Right, oh, sorry. Peter's going to calculate that for us. He's asking, how much interest would we pay over the life of the loan from now to the end versus the prepayment penalty cost? That's your question, correct? He's, he's working on that right now. Good question, we'll come back to it.
If I agree with your right, but if you don't do that for the year, that percentage.
Oh, okay.
So the loan term is?
It's a good question.
The loan terminates in December of 2023. So you figure our average payment is about $13,000. So given, you know, year to date, that'd be just under $500,000 beyond, so it's about $200,000. Those are really rough numbers to pay it off.
Even, so he's saying even paying the penalty, we save ourselves $200,000 over this three years, spread out over the next three years. Yes, ma'am?
Do you have any automated giving options or forms?
You apps, you can go online and sign up to give. If you'll go to the website where it says, in the right corner, I believe it still says "give," it'll offer several, you can give from your bank or a credit card. We actually moved into the 90s a couple of months ago. We're hoping to get to the 2000s soon, but yes, you can do that. Thank you, Peter, for that. And you can give to this online too, yes.
What is the present interest rate?
The present interest rate floats at what, Peter?
You know, it's a reduction in share. Probably it's half on, next year it'll be, I'd say probably five, six.
It's been between five and six. The way it was set, John, it's a floating rate, but it's still a pretty high rate. It's not the, so it's between five and six. We saw a little reduction this year. Our payments came down several hundred dollars because the rate floated down.
Hold on, John.
Yes.
With the interest rates now at historical lows, would it be, you consider refinancing? Would that make any sense at a low rate?
It wouldn't, it really wouldn't, so, so John, that's a great, he's saying, why wouldn't we consider refinancing? We still have to pray the early payment on a refinance. If we refinance with them, we still owe that early payment period. And to be candid, this is a compliment to this church. $126,000, y'all have never batted an eye at that number before. I'm not, I'm saying, I'm still new in one sense. And I think, I mean, the need of the hour is we're still short-staffed. If you look at where your church was in its heydays, in terms of ministry to people and administrative help, we're less than 40% of that today. And we, before we shut down, we were having about 700 people in our orbit, real live people who saw this as their church. And like getting administrative stuff done, like we're having someone hired this week, that $13,000, we need to hire some people. So I think refinancing doesn't help the need of the hour because we're just short-staffed. I mean, we saw our youth group explode this summer, and we had been planning on, which we're doing, hiring some youth interns. In January, we had to hire earlier because we opened in June, youth came. We're seeing our children's ministry get bigger. We're seeing our Sunday schools get bigger. So partly why we long to pay this off and not refinance it is because, A, we'd pay the penalty anyway in refinancing, so we'd take on more debt. And B, we need to clear it. Go.
Not to belabor this.
You can belabor all you want, John Capasino. You're from New Jersey, they belabor a lot of things.
I mean, wouldn't it be advisable to hang on to our cash, per se? Pay the $30,000 or whatever the dollars are for the prepayment penalty, and borrow the money at virtually no interest almost? I mean, that's a heavy...
Well, I don't know that they would, John, I'm gonna be, I don't mind giving an honest answer to an honest question. We did not go out and shop rates for the church. But we will not get, as a commercial enterprise or church, the same rates people are getting on their stunning refinances now at literally 2.75, which is free money. Currently, I mean, I, your elders sat in a room and considered what you're asking is, do we have enough cash on hand? And the answer is, we have plenty of cash on hand. We just do. I mean, if you're, if we're honest, we could probably write the check today and giving, continuing the same, we would recoup that pretty quickly. I think because of your question and the, and the questions about going forward in the economy, we decided to say to you, and we recognize that who we're speaking to, both online and right now, are some people who have lost their jobs. We have people in the church who've lost amazing jobs suddenly, and other people who have not yet felt this, John. We decided to say, hey, let's do this together and get rid of this, and we'll still have plenty of cash on hand. And so that was our thinking. And I say this as a compliment. You're always scared to say this as the leader of an organization. Our giving this year has been extraordinary. We challenged the church to do 12% more than last year, and you've done it. In the worst year any of us have ever lived in, basically. And in an economy that's bumping along. And so all of those were factored into this decision. Wish my meetings with my wife went this easy. I'm kidding, Marissa. I'm kidding, Marissa. She has better, more poignant questions and often more information about what I'm communicating. So let me give a few more updates and see if you have questions about this. As we have talked about new staff, I think you'll remember this. We have coming on January 1st, a young woman who'll be graduating college named Lindsay, and I've dropped Lindsay's last name, Chad.
Pierce.
Pierce.
Just like that. Lindsay Pierce.
Lindsay Pierce will be moving here to be, work alongside Chris Holland, our youth pastor. She'll be our, our Women's Director for Youth for High School and Middle School. We're really excited about Lindsay starting in January 1st. And again, our youth group has really been succeeding. We also have a new woman starting this week in the office, and her name, Chad, is?
Cindy Pastoreus.
Cindy Pastoreus. She'll really be Chad's assistant. She'll help me some. And so we're really excited about her showing up. But again, we're a little short-staffed. And I don't know, Peter, if I'm forgetting something that we talked about at this point. Oh, I know what it is. I'm sorry. We have been searching for, one thing I'm learning is no matter how clear you are, you're not clear. That would probably be the first rule of marriage, right? No matter how clear you are. So we're still searching for a new Director of Worship here. So Jim Brummey and Danny Dunning will continue working. But what we have realized is we have more needs for worship, not as it pertains as much to first service, but more as it, as we think about second service, and more as how much I'm having to do around worship. So we've been seeking this person. We've interviewed about seven people. We've not found, found the right person. Because part of what you did as a church, even before I got here, I really agree with it, is you decided to do essentially two different worship styles in one church. And some people will say, hey, that's not a great idea. I actually think it's a fantastic idea. I think you cannot, when, when you're a pastor, the one thing you know every Monday morning you're failing at is worship, even when it's excellent. That you can never make the entire, you know, broadband of people who are thinking about worship happy with it. But we realized, because Danny is a teacher at Push Ridge Christian Academy and is an excellent teacher, and Jim Brummey runs a ministry, they're both part-time, very part-time. They've done an unbelievable job, is that we wanted a full-time person here helping us really disciple musicians, find musicians, create more worship bands, create more worship teams. And so we are seeking that position. We have not found that person yet. We'll still be seeking them. But it, as much as I say it, I know until we don't do it, you won't believe me, it's not going to fundamentally change how you experience those two worship services. Part of what you see today is us moving back to Jim Brummey and the choir. It's great to have the choir back in the first service. Danny Dunning in the second service, that's right. And unless a nuclear bomb goes off in America, we're not going back the way we were. I'm not shutting down again. But that's not, I can't promise that, but I'm done with shutting down. But we are seeking that, and when we have it, we'll let you meet them. We have a group of people who are seeking that, have done the interview. But I knew that this would be probably the toughest position we've ever hired. Because if you're a good worship director, the minute another pastor offers you a job, you get a raise. Like I'm every worship director's best friend. They're like, hey, John, why don't you offer me that job? Because all they want to do is go to their pastor and say, I just got offered a new job. And they get paid more money because they're so hard to find. So you could pray that God will lead us to the right person. Yes, sir. Tim? I like questions.
I have no idea who the bank is, but a lot of the big banks have been giving away a lot of money to Black Lives Matter, whatever. Has anybody ever asked this bank if they'll forgive the prepayment penalty?
We are in, that's a great question, Tim. We are in the process of doing that. Winston, so we're doing a little research on this. And this is not, this just happens, Tim. And the transition from Mark to me, that's a lot of years, I realize. Not all the record-keeping was perfect. It was good, we're not in trouble. But Winston can remember in his mind that when we signed the, what would you call it, Winston? The original note, that prepayment wasn't there, but it showed up later. So we are going to go to the bank and request that be removed, Tim. I don't, we need to get into it and really read the fine print, and we're in the process. And I would, if someone who works for this bank is here, forgive me, but we will be changing banks after this. We need a little bit better customer service in several areas. But it is what it is today. But we will ask for that to be removed.
Who is it?
Is that what it is? It's, it's Bank of the West. And I think, here's what I think has happened, is that when all of that negotiation happened and accounts were set up, the person running the church was good friends with the church running the bank. Now neither of them exist. And so that relationship, we're just an arbitrary church that they don't know much about and don't care about. And so we've got to go find somebody that cares about us. So if in fact you're a banker, see Peter. Good question. Tim, we are going to ask. Good question.
Could you mention the time frame for this to happen?
Oh, we're trying to do it before December 31st of this year. I asked, we're trying to raise $126,000 between now and December 31st. Great question. It's, when we, last year, I mean, it's been two years in this year. When we did this last year, we had to do the payment on like December 7th. We had this 24-hour window, and Winston had to come over on a Saturday and sign it and notarize it. I think we just, we want to do it before the 31st. So yeah. Yes, Don?
How would we designate the money for building, building, building?
He's asking, how do you designate the money for the building? You do it in one of three ways, Don. You go online, and when you choose your online giving option, you designate Pay Off the Mortgage, which is an option. Number two, you get my carefully crafted envelopes, which we printed on our printer on a Monday morning with the large words Pay Off the Mortgage, and you put it in that envelope, and it will be attributed to that account because it says Pay Off the Mortgage. Or number three, you write in the memo, this is for the Pay Off the Mortgage. So any of those ways, you would designate it for that? Yes?
For 22, is that, is that a stock?
Oh, obviously, thank you. Many of you give at the end of the year and give stock because it gives you a big tax break. That's right. You can designate it through a stock gift too.
Where you work your part around the church?
Yes, and Leno would love, this is where Leno gets excited. Leno would love to talk to you about those options. Like he's got, but there's lots of ways to give. I took it to be, it's only a Supreme Court justice. I took it as a more general question, not a specific third-level law. No, you've been incredibly helpful. There's lots of ways to do it. We'd love a stock gift. So you're right. But the detail's wonderful, yes. History major, Supreme Court Justice. Big picture, history happened. Other questions? Thanks for that. All right, friends, go in peace. Thank y'all. Oh, 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 wait, go.
I was just wondering, back to the worship pastor. What background credentials are you looking for in the worship pastor community, kind of seminary background as well as music or this music?
Quite honestly, we want a front person. We want somebody who is experienced leading worship, who can, of their own volition, with an instrument, own the room. So what I've gotten, a lot of applications from people, is people who want to direct a choir or who want to do choral, these are beautiful gifts. That's not what we're looking for in this position. We have that covered. We want, because it's the lean Sundays I live with. When everybody's on vacation, I need someone who can step up and do a hymn or do a contemporary song on their own. So we have a very specific skill set that we're looking for. But we would say, we want them to disciple musicians. It is important that any church, especially of this size, that has had the history of music that this church has had, that we have someone in the mainstream of music, both on the classical and on the rock side. So that they, and we don't, we're not necessarily, so part of their job is missional. But that's the main part is, on the Sundays when the chafens are gone and gyms and visiting children are... and Jim's in visiting children across the country, and Danny's on vacation, and John is up here leading the singing, and he's dying, I want somebody I can order to be here and not just be a volunteer. Does that make sense? And my volunteers are amazing, they're amazing. But I need to order somebody to do a better job on these slim Sundays. And in the Second Service, we got, we need to discover our identity a little bit more. Good question. Yes, sir? Leaving style aside.
Leaving style aside. Leaving style aside, I would like to see somebody that has a teacher's heart in there. Maybe an elder type of ministry. Because one of my biggest gripes with music in the church, and I'm not musical, is that I sit there and I look at a song, whether it's an old one or a new one, and there's some bad doctrine in some of them.
Sure.
And it never gets screened out. We go in, we buy stuff, and we stick it up there. And we did it because it's good and high-beat and stuff, but it's got terrible doctrine in it. And so I would like to see that as a qualification for a music minister or worship minister.
I agree with you, and I would also say some of that's on me. And, and as it were, Chad, like, what we really want to form is a team around worship that not only explores what we're singing, but what we're doing in the worship service. I think there are a lot of questions, these are really positive questions that this church is facing. For instance, if every Sunday school class goes, I promise I'm answering your question, if every Sunday school class goes this fall, we're just simply out of space in a massive way. It may be that a year from now, when there is a real normal, we can't do a middle hour, we've got to do two Sunday schools under worship that's closer. Well, then we can go to an hour and 15 minutes, which really lets us do the Lord's Table in a fuller way. It lets us slow down, it lets us even sing a little bit more, it lets us be more thematic. And I would just say that I agree with you. These songs need to be Jesus-centered and not us-centered. They need to be correct with Scripture, for sure. And that's not as simple as it looks. You would think that in a week, we could get to that, and sometimes we can't. So part of what this role will be is gathering a team that will involve elders, and will involve staff, and say, what are we singing and why are we singing it? And we've done a pretty good job of that, I hear you. So it's not, but when I say we need a front person, what I mean is not just, I want to entertain people. Worship is not entertainment, it's an invitation into the presence of God. But professionalism, and actually diversity of musical skills helps in that also. And, and most pastors will tell you, unless you have a full-time artist, musician on staff seeking that, it's harder. Because both Danny and Jim, who do an amazing job, just don't have the time to do all that we need to do. So I agree, I want to affirm what you're saying. And it's a bigger question that, because I have a feeling we're going to have to, we can grow in worship because we may get more space if we ever have to swap back to create more Sunday school space. Oh, yeah. I'm loud enough, anyway.
Hey, John, I have a question in the back. In regards to the worship leader, I was just wondering if, and this is just a question of curiosity, if the type of individual you're looking for is someone who already has experience in a church setting beyond an internship? Or would you be open to a college graduate, maybe, that had an internship, had internship experience? Just I, with two kids that both go to two different Christian universities, I know that there are hundreds of kids across the country who are majoring in worship arts, who are getting all of this kind of educational experience. And I'm just wondering if that's an avenue that the church has thought of, you know, entering into, to find a person?
So we have had folks of that ilk apply. And for us, the, I think, for someone to apply, for instance, they have to give us a resume, but more importantly, they have to give us videos of them leading worship. And so I've probably known two or three 17-year-olds that could do what I'm thinking about well, if we gave them the right support. But we're leaning a lot towards the experience side. So I don't mean that to exclude what you're saying, a recent graduate. You know, in our church in Knoxville, for instance, we started with, I mean, we were a little tiny group of people planted in church. We started with this sophomore gentleman leading worship, and he grew into it, right? And he would be, have been worth hiring at the end of that time. But so far, if you don't have experience, but more importantly, if you can't show us on video that your voice and that gift God has given you to actually lead worship is there, we're not, this is not a learning job. Like when we hire interns for the summer in youth, or, hey, let's teach you ministry as you go help us. This is a show-up-and-do-it first-day job, certainly with, everybody learns and grows. But yes, it's all about their experience, in my mind. You can have four more, I told you, see, we talked about money, which is normally the big discussion at home, I got three questions. Worship style, we're on an eighth question, go ahead. Absolutely, and let me say, the job description was posted on our website, so you can find it. The job description is certainly leaning more into the Second Service. Through a lot of discussions, so this person's not... What you said's true. I mean, I've never been clearer when I interview people. Like, you've got to do holy, 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 and you've got to do it like it was done in 1542, it was written after that. And you've got to do music, and you've got to figure out how to do music written two weeks ago, sometimes. But this job is more about, and this comes out of an experience I had in Knoxville, to be honest, is that when you hire an artist in your church, so hear that language. True artists are seldom that narrow, true artists. They appreciate the depth of music. And, and I, God is my witness, we are going to have a more traditional and a more contemporary service that are separate. We will not go to them looking the same. The liturgy will be similar, right? The music will not. Because this church actually stands, like, I didn't know this when I got here, I mean, the foothills are their own weird place. Where no one from Tucson lives, and everybody from Iowa lives. Who grew up either CRC, Lutheran, Catholic, or Midwestern Baptist, who appreciates kind of what I grew up with as a Southern Baptist. And then, but we're on the, you know, we sort of look to Oro. If you really think about like where our school is and where we're looking, which are people who really grew up on the West Coast, singing in places like The Rock or these churches. So you're, you're really trying to blend a musical style here that's pretty unique and necessary. And so I hope that, in one sense, that the First and Second Services become fuller. Not, certainly with people, but musically. And I think what is actually the most important part of this position is that they understand contextualization. So your music must, and worship must be God-centered. We want to sing occasionally about what we are doing or what we believe, but we want to sing more often about who God is, that he is holy, and that he is loving, and he's forgiving. We want the music to be God-centered. But we want to sing the music of the people we live among. And this is a really difficult point, and it's actually the most important point. When Jesus put on flesh, he changed worship styles. The worship of heaven did not come directly with him into Israel. He contextualized himself. Now, most people see this as code language for the preachers trying to be weird. I'm just saying, if you want to meet, if you want to reach pagans in Oro, you have to hear what they're listening to. You have to know the styles they're listening to. So for instance, Redeemer Church in New York, which many people know, actually had four styles of worship, and one of them was jazz. It's almost impossible to do jazz to worship, and they did it, and it was amazing. And it was their most attended service because New Yorkers have that sensibility. The interesting thing was, they were doing the same words in all four. So organ, jazz, essentially rock and roll, and then a hybrid service. And their point was, we need people to walk into the church and recognize in instrumentation and in sensibility to the music I'm growing up with. That's not code language for radio music. That's just code language for, the way people speak in our culture is through music. And so you have, sitting in this church, various tastes, which are to be honored in the name of Jesus, in the name of incarnation. So for me, the most important thing I need to teach this person is you need to learn to listen. You need to listen to people in the First Service, you need to listen to people in the Second Service, but you need to listen to people downtown and in Oro. And what do they, what are they used to? There will always be a learning curve to come into the church, always. Like, we're God's people, we're weird. We believe that the Savior of the world was born of a virgin, that he was resurrected from the dead, that we eat of his flesh and blood weekly. That's weird, that's, you can't get people used to that. But we also have to be careful that we're not singing in the 17th century because that's what I was taught, that's not what you're saying when I was four. But they were singing in the 17th century because the words were amazing, and we're doing it the way it can be done today. Same words can often be retuned, same words can stay tuned. So for me, the more important question is, how do we invite people into their music, whether they're 92, 62, 42, or 22, in this church? And that's a hard question. That's why this is a hard hire. Does that answer your question? And there's my sermon on worship. Other questions, great questions, I bet we have five more about worship. Oh, Amy? Because, well, okay, so, y'all don't know this, but I'm an open book. So in a perfect world, it's just hard to express how short-staffed we are at this church. So in a perfect world, like, we attempted to actually hire a young man who had done this for 10 years in a context very similar to ours because he was ordainable and could, for instance, immediately, because of his previous work experience, not only be great at this, but start men's ministry like that, taking that off our very exhausted, overworked Chad's plate, and my plate. And he's in the music scene. And so that thought is there, but we actually, Amy, agree with you, but we set the bar low because every once in a while, and especially in this economy, to be honest with you, bands are failing. And there are some men and women alike who've been in Christian band and been Christian band leaders, who are 27 and have amazing experience and have thought deeply about this, and could bring a ministry to that. But they may not yet be ordainable, especially in the confines of the PCA. And the PCA is a little too confining in its view of ordination. I don't mean my ordination, but we didn't want to limit ourselves to you must be ordained because we may not confine that. So that is in our purview. It just that we, I don't like the language, but to answer your question, we set the bar of accomplishments lower because some people can reach that bar and be amazing, who couldn't reach this bar of ordination. But we see all our ministry jobs as ministry. The minister of music is as important as the director of children or the director of youth, or the men's ministry or the women's ministry. These are equally important. And so, but we thought we might grow someone into that job also. And I will tell you quite frankly, we're willing to hire a man or a woman for this role because each could equally do it well. And in worship, the more we have women identified up here, the better we are in this culture. Because we've already decided in our church, we will not ordain women to the office of Elder or Deacon, which really limits us in terms of the way some people think about us. And so we would love for this possibly to be a woman. I have to quit because I promised Danny Dunning he could practice at 10:30, which was three minutes ago, because he has to lead the Second Service. I love you, thank you, go in peace.